All right, I call the agenda briefing to order for January 21st, 2025. All right. Imocation of B by Barbara Acoff, Pledge Allegiance by Mr. Foster. We'll approve the January 7th, 2025 minutes. Motion to approve January 21st adjusted agenda. We have none? We have a special presentation by Jay's Kitchen for Wayne County Hero Spotlight. Presentation of retirement plaque for Detention Officer Willie Sparks. Employee anniversary pins. How many anniversary pins do we have this time, Carol?
About 25, maybe.
25?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion to approve the Martin Luther King Day proclamation as presented by Commissioner Williams. Appointment committee.
We do have some.
Okay. Public hearing to receive public comments regarding an economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance for the development of pad-ready site and construction at warehouse of Lot 6 of the Wayne County Business Campus. Unfinished business, discussion of firework permits, budget amendments. Morning.
Let me go back if I could to the discussion on the fireworks permit.
All right.
Exactly what type of discussion are we going to be having?
Andrew pulled the permits, ordinances, and state law.
Just to update the board on where we stand.
There was some discussion at the last meeting that just get added to the agenda, so the board's aware of what our procedures are for approval. So I pulled the state statute that governs the issuance of permits, as well as the fire code, which is what our inspections department follows, and then our policy as well.
And from what I'm understanding, we basically allow the municipalities to issue their own permits.
The city of Goldsboro is the only one.
Only the city of Goldsboro.
We delegated authority to the city of Goldsboro for their own permitting. Everyone else, we do.
Are there any other entities that have requested permits?
I believe there's several different, Carol printed out a list of all the ones that you all have approved. I think there's just a handful of different companies that have requested permits before.
Well, the accusation is that that gentleman was the only one that actually had to purchase permits. So this, I'd like to see that we have in fact, have in fact, had other entities that have applied and issued permits.
That's correct, and anyone who shoots off fireworks is required to get a permit. The issue is, that's a criminal violation, so I mean, that would be up to law enforcement to enforce that. And, you know, as kind of Chip said at the last meeting, if someone's shooting off, we can drive out there and see them, but if they're not there anymore, you know, it's a problem. You pretty much have to catch them in the act in order to charge them, so.
Okay.
But all the materials are in the packet.
And I've been on this board going on 13 years now, and this has been an ongoing thing for 13 years.
Well, I mean, if you ever go down to South Carolina, you stop to south the border, you gotta pick up some fireworks, undoubtedly. And if you're back here in Wayne County, you may shoot them off on holidays. Very rap, very quickly though, before the law gets there. You may or may not, but you should, by our ordinance, actually get a permit.
Get a permit.
Well, he's shooting commercial fireworks.
I agree, and that's different. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. All right, Ms. Angie, I think it's shorter.
We're going to start off with budget amendment number 191. This is from our Fleet Department. They are requesting to move funds to professional, from professional services to their tow-in line item. This is due to more and more vehicles breaking down, and they're having to have those towed. That's in the amount of $8,000. Number 191.
We discussed that last year, we just pulled the trigger.
That's the second one I've seen for a large amount.
Number 193, this is a budget amendment from the Health Department. This is to realign their funds for environmental health to capital outlay to cover that purchase.
So they're purchasing two? Is it vans, or is it, don't know?
They're purchasing two vehicles. I can tell you what they are.
Because they just got a truck, didn't they?
Ford Ranger crew cab.
Is that the same truck, or is that another one?
Not sure. I don't want to, I can find out.
Yes, and so.
Did we approve that one last year?
I think so, yeah.
Last budget year?
This was approved in their CIP, a Ford Ranger. They just did not have enough funds, I guess because the, they did not budget enough in their CIP. It has gone, the price has have increased. They must be both Ford Rangers.
I got you, all right. Because they had a trailer that they bought, and they were going, and they were going to have a truck to pull it. So that truck's going to pull that trailer. I would, I would ask that we might discuss having, as far as our vehicles being purchased all at one time from singular things instead of individual departments. I don't think a Ford Ranger's going to pull much of a trailer. Ford Ranger's small.
I'm not sure if that's what that one would be for, but I can find out. I'll find out.
Yeah, okay. But what would we be purchasing two?
They had vehicles that were old and high mileage. It was time to replace their vehicles. So it was part of their CIP in the last budget cycle. Is that correct, Angie?
Yeah, in this, for this year.
For environmental health.
Do they need to?
Oh, environmental health. Oh, okay, sure, it's environmental health. Yeah, I see it goes to, I understand then, okay. I thought it was to pull a trailer. Well, that's what, I mean, yeah, well, that's, they bought a trailer last year, and they were buying a truck to pull the trailer with, but that's already been done. Okay, got it. That's through the actual Health Department themselves. Okay, good enough. But I thought it was, I thought it was F-150, I think is what they said last time. Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, moving on to 196. This budget amendment is for the Sheriff's Office. This is to record receipt of revenues for controlled substance tax from the North Carolina Department of Revenue in the amount of $352.88. Okay, we're going to skip this one, Carol, because that was the duplication. And 202, this is Health Department. This is to realign the reducing infant mortality in communities and healthy beginnings budget according to the program's approved realignments. And that total realignment is $12,693. Budget amendment 204, this is from the Sheriff's Office. This is to transfer funds in seized property to cover the maintenance and support agreement for our crisis negotiator cell phone equipment and associated app, $5,895. And finally, budget amendment number 207 is from our Solid Waste Department. They are requesting this budget amendment to anticipate grant funding and a 20% match for the purchase of cooking oil containers. The grant's $18,500 and is requiring a $3,700 match.
Can we go back, can we go back to 202? How much you say that one was?
The total realignment is $12,693.
All right, I thought you said six something like that. All right, thank you, ma'am.
And that's all that I have.
Thank you. All right, moving on on the consent agenda, motion to approve Wayne County Personnel Policy Update.
I think Sarah's here to introduce that. Good morning.
Good morning.
There are three topics that I needed to just clarify in the personnel policy, so I'm bringing that before you for your approval. There are three parts. The first part is the 401K. There was a recent update to a statute that said that part-time employees are eligible for 401K. So we had to update our policy to include that. The second part is our accrual rates. There are a lot of questions from employees about when that shows up on their, on their pay stub. So I clarified that. It was causing some issues about when, when exactly it hit their accrual rates. So I included some language in that just to clarify. And then the third part was the disciplinary action on page 70. I clarified that it needs to, there needs to be some type of written warning before there's a first disciplinary action. And I just made sure that language was more clear in the personnel policy. And you may see some updates coming, just because it's brand new, and there are some things that will have to be weeded out. But there's nothing of great significance. The biggest one to me that may affect, that may affect budget is the 401K being our, our part-time employees are now eligible for 401K.
That was based on House Bill 1020?
So there was a House bill which required that? They're not, they're allowed to, not required to?
No, not required. Any questions for me?
On page 7, is this the first disciplinary action that you're updating here? You know, the first one that you would speak to an employee about?
Yes, so this is, and it can be any, you know, any, any kind of documentation. It just needs to be documented that before we start the disciplinary process, we had a documented conversation that there's an issue. Which is how, we've always practiced that, just in the new policy, it wasn't clear.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving along. Motion to adopt a resolution declaring surplus real property and approving the sale of two parcels located on 1276 Parkstown Road, La Grange, NC, pin number 3559241461 and 3559241278.
Good morning again. This is an old foreclosure property. I believe it was back in 2015, we foreclosed on these properties. And someone has reached out, and they're interested in purchasing these two lots, both the one that's shaded right there, and then the one below it, and their offer was $2,500. The tax value on both of these combined is about $10,000.
What size of lots?
It's on the tax card, if you can scroll up. The appraisal card. About a quarter of an acre is what it looks like.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
That brings up an interesting question. You're speaking of a foreclosure that took place in nine years ago. So for nine years, the property has basically sat there. Are there other properties in the county that are in similar circumstances that maybe we need to advertise?
We have several, so the way, we have a spreadsheet in my office that we add our foreclosures to, and then we have people who inquire all the time about it, so we email those, that spreadsheet out. And that's usually how these offers come about, is people inquire to our office, and then we give them the information.
But would it make sense that maybe rather than just sending it out to the individuals that normally bid on those properties?
We could post it online.
Yeah, I believe we need to have a post-it, a little bit more, get them a word out that these properties are available.
Yeah, we can do that.
That's great.
And the tax value on this property is what?
One of them is $8,500, and then I think the other one was about $2,000, so it's roughly about $10,000 right now, combined.
And their offer is what for both of them?
$2,500.
Kind of like a deal to me.
Go back to the map. Those are not real large lots. That's right down from the church, then.
Mm-hmm, it is.
I got you. Right over the intersection. Is that a right away on the backside of it?
It is, yep. And we will notify the adjoining property owners as well, to let them know if they wanted to do an upset bid.
Oh, okay, that's, that's good.
Any more questions?
Thank you.
Moving on to number 12. Establish a public hearing on February 18th, 2025 at 9:30 to receive public comments on an amendment of Section 41, 50.8, and 50.12 of the Wayne County zoning ordinance to reflect changes reflected to the airport height overlay. Mr. Gray.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, this, this ordinance amendment actually looks worse than it actually is, so. There's a lot of changes, but all the changes are really clerical changes, wording changes, changes to come to compliance with FAA rules. So basically, the main change I'll point out in here, if you scan through it, you'll see a lot of it is wording changes. But if you flip to, if you look at page five, the, our airport, Wayne Executive Jetport.
Run the deck to page five on the screen, please, Carol.
Yeah, if you'll scroll down, I'll just tell you when to stop you. Right there, yep. Basically, all of our airports, including Seymour Johnson, were kind of grouped into the same category in terms of their height overlay districts that extend out from the airport. So they're all called the same thing, like inner horizontal zone, outer horizontal, approach area, those type of things. Well, our airport has asked that we clarify theirs a little more. So what we've done is we separated out our airport into ordinance. We left Seymour Johnson and Mount Olive the same, and they are fine with theirs. Some wording changes have happened in theirs, but the reason there's a whole new section for our airport is they requested that. So Seymour Johnson, for example, has an inner horizontal and an outer horizontal zone, two different horizontal zones, whereas Airport Airport just wanted, needed the one, just a horizontal zone. They didn't need the two. So we separated it out just to make it clear for our airport. But in terms of regulation, there is no change. Nothing changes with the height zones in terms of the heights themselves and where they're located. It's just more clarification in terms of the wording and so forth for FAA standards.
There's nothing changed on the map far as the day out from the airport runway?
Not at all. And then the only other major change in here, Carol, if you'll scroll down to the table, whenever you get to a table, right there. There's pages, many pages of a table that looks like this. This is basically related to Seymour Johnson's noise zone. So we took the opportunity to go ahead and update that for, with their latest land use study. Again, there's no change in regulation here. All this table does is it just clarifies the uses within those zones. So we already have a table within those, when land uses within those noise zones, and this just adds more uses. The other table was missing a whole lot of land uses, so we had to guess in terms of where they fell. So this is provided by the land use study. This table is and clarifies exactly, it separates out more uses in terms of how to apply those noise zones. So in terms of the noise zones, nothing's changing. We still have a table as it is. This just clarifies and expands that table to include uses that just were not included before.
Can I ask a question? You know, just make, like the single units detached, it says clear zone no. What does that mean to me if I was?
Clear zone is basically the area right there at the, basically at the runway. Your APZ 1 and APZ 2 are your, basically they're the approach areas at the Seymour Johnson, where your noise is going to be the highest. And so those are your areas, those three zones are areas right closest to the runway where you're going to have the most impact. Some of that, quite a bit of that's going to be in Goldsboro jurisdiction, but we do have some that extends out there at Miller's Chapel. It kind of pans out just right there around Miller's Chapel Road, around. McCalls, and it stands kind of northeast from there. But other than that, those three zones right there really do not encompass a large area of the county. It's really just a small area at the end of the runways.
Madam Chair, oh, so is it, anything changed on far as construction, stuff like this? This, okay, so everything's still the same far as the noise and the insulation?
Everything's the same. And you asked about the heights. I did include the last, there is a map in there. I don't know if it's the last page of that scanned document or not, but there is a map that has the overlay zones for our airport. That's included. See if it's down there. It may be a separate attachment. Let's see. Yes, a separate attachment. But anyway, you'll see it in your packet. Let's see, that's it right there, yep. There it is. That's our airport, and all those lines are distances, heights. So as you get away from the airport, you see the runway that goes left to right, right there in the middle.
Blow it up a little bit, please.
If you scroll in a little. You'll see at the end of the runways, at the right and left, all those parallel lines. Those are heights. So as you get further away from the airport, which is right there in the middle, those lines increase. So you see right there, it goes like every 10 feet, I believe, off the runway end of it in terms of height. Like I said, none of that's changing. This is just a visual that we never, we didn't have before that helps identify. So basically, our ordinance puts it in writing how these are identified. But this is actually a visual of what it actually looks like. And so you see that there as you get further away from it, left and right, as you're flying, landing or taking off, you see those heights increasing further away from the airport. And then the oval lines are also your heights as well, and those increases you go out also away from the airport. Like I said, nothing's really changing with that. It's just more visual and ordinance language is changing to make it easier to figure out these heights, I guess you could say. But a lot of it's FAA changes that were required, so.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
There's a good bit involved right here. And I just want to make sure, what you're saying is they're basically technical changes and/or taking the existing regulations that we have on height and actually putting it into a picture format.
That's right. That's exactly right.
So we really have not impacted the use of property with these changes.
Yes, sir.
Okay, what's the next, what's the next map? What is that?
Oh, that's just, if you, the next one, yeah, that one.
It's just?
That's the fan off the end of the runway. And it shows that you continue out over, actually, that's over Eureka. It's hard to tell on that map, but as you fan out, it gets higher and higher. So in these areas, unless you're looking to build a super tall tower, like thousands of feet tall, you're really not going to run any issues there. But again, that fan is already there. This is just a visual of showing what it actually looks like.
So why wouldn't, why wouldn't this be done with Mount Olive? Just because they didn't ask, or?
I think the, the current one, well, wouldn't yet, they didn't request it, but our ordinance, our current ordinance, the way it's worded, I believe, is, is fine for them.
Okay, got you.
But, but with ours, with some stuff that they're doing, they just needed some changes in theirs.
Got it. Thanks, sir. Thank you, ma'am.
All right.
Thank you, Barry.
Okay, thank you.
All right, number 13, motion to approve amendment number one for work authorization number 14 for design and bidding for the airfield drainage improvements. Phase two, an appropriate budget amendment. This will be funded 90% by an FAA grant. Any questions on that?
If you're looking at the map, that is the red section there, where basically they are extending the work that they currently are doing on drainage to include the rest of the jetport.
Carol, can you pull up a map?
Okay, that one there. That's basically the ditches along the taxiways.
The ditches are already there, they just need.
They need, well, they need cleaning out and reshaping because they're washing and everything, they can't keep, can't maintain. That's where, that's where it clogged up, you know, that time, a while back when the water was on the thing. We went out with the excavator and pulled it out so the work could get out. That is the beginning of Stony Creek right there. That ends up at Ash Street. And they are currently doing the, that that's in green currently, they are out there now doing that work. Yeah.
What are they doing to make the improvements? I mean, exactly what are they doing differently?
They're reshaping the entire ditch system.
Just reshaping it.
They are. They're removing all of the trees that were, there were a number of trees down at the end of this that are being removed and improving the drainage. They are enlarging some of the pipes, correct? They are. Yep. They are. So some of the pipes that go up under the taxiways, they'll actually enlarge those pipes. They're reshaping those ditch banks to where. They're reshaping those ditch banks to where Kendall can actually cut those with a tractor.
And you say this is the beginning of Stony Creek?
That is the beginning of Stony Creek, yeah.
Okay, well, it's far enough out that it didn't, Blue Line Ditch don't play into it.
That is the beginning of it, that's a drainage structure out there, that's man-made.
Any more questions on that?
I say beginning of Stony Creek, that's where the water originates from, the going into Stony Creek. Stony Creek actually starts at Combs Road.
All right. Number 14, motion to change order number one for the perimeter fence project and appropriate budget amendment. This will be a 90% funded by state grant.
This is also at the airport?
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we get some 90% grants from something other than the airport?
I know. Any questions on that?
Much needed.
All right, then we'll have the counter manager report, Florida Commissioner report. Close session, Ms. Parker.
Don't think so right now.
And then we will adjourn. All right. The agenda briefing is closed. Yes.
All right. Good morning again. I opened the January 21st, 2025 meeting. Invocation will be by me, Barbara Acock. Will you please bow your head, please? Heavenly Father, we ask that you open our hearts and minds as we come together for this meeting. May we approach this time with humility and willingness to work together for the Buttermans of Wayne County. God our thoughts and actions so they align with your purpose. Amen. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Foster.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to approve January 7th, 2025 minutes.
Is that a rule?
Okay, we have a motion on the floor.
Who made the motion?
Me or Ray, Tony, either one, no matter. Mine's not coming up. Maybe it would this time. I didn't know. I don't know. Why just tell her I was ready to answer.
Do we have an adjusted agenda?
No ma'am, no adjustments.
No adjusted agenda?
Madam Chair.
I move to approve the agenda.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. All right, we have a special presentation at Wayne County Hero Spotlight by Jay's Kitchen.
Morning.
Morning.
We have about a thousand employees in Wayne County. I often forget that they have whole lives outside of what we do here. We got an email from one of our employees in Veteran Services who wanted to share something that happened to them outside of work, and I think it's important just to read to you exactly what they told us. On Tuesday, December 10th, 2024, my four-year-old grandson and I went to Wayne Prep Academy to watch a basketball game. We were sitting in the bleachers eating nachos when my grandson began to grab his neck, indicating that he was choking. My friend and I jumped up to aid him, and during this time, we surrounded him, assessing the situation. In a split second, I turned around, and Officer Matthew Wade was there on his knees, ready to take over if needed. I have no idea where he came from or how he knew something was going on, but to my knowledge, he was on the opposite side of the gym. His presence alone was very welcoming under the conditions that we were in at that moment. Once my grandson was in the clear, Officer Wade ensured he was okay and even offered to take him to the concession stand to get another treat, but not chips. That allowed me to regroup myself. He was definitely in the right place at the right time. There was a gym full of people, and his vigilance was amazing. I'm very thankful for his quick response and helpfulness after this emergency was over. We are honored today to recognize as Jay's Hero of the Month, Deputy Matthew Wade.
And Jay's Kitchen would like to recognize Deputy Matthew Wade.
For his great work and contribution, thank you.
Just a sec, would you like to come take a picture?
Yes.
Okay. Have him get some pictures. Would anybody like to say anything?
Madam Chair. Yes, sir.
I would like to say, you know, a lot of the people in Wayne County do not realize what we've got, but just like this officer, you know, they're, I don't know whether he was in uniform or not, but it doesn't make any difference. But we are so blessed to have people like, like him. But we are so blessed to have people like him and others to... You know, they're unsung heroes, and sometimes they don't get any credit. And I just want to thank Jay's Kitchen for doing this, but we are blessed to have the first responders that we've got in Wayne County. Thank you, and congratulations.
Yes, thank you. Anybody else? All right. Move on to category number four, Presentation of Retirement Plaques for Detention Officer Willie D. Sparks.
Good morning.
Good morning. Sheriff Pierce.
I'll ask Mr. Willie Sparks to come forward, please. I'm losing another good one. But I think he's going to come back and help me part-time. Willie, from the Wayne County Board of Commissioners, presented to Willie D. Sparks in recognition and appreciation of your many years of faithful, dedicated service, May 21st, 1997, to December 31st, 2024, Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations, sir. Looking that way?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Sparks, would you like to say something?
You want to say anything? Okay. Do we go up there or turn right here? Okay, let's go.
And if you guys will look right up there, Joel, take your picture.
Yes, just look at the red camera.
Look at the red dot.
The red dot, yeah, thank you. All right, he's got it. Thank you so much.
We still got it, yeah. Sorry. Should have looked at it.
All right. Appointments Committee?
Well, I'm sorry. We've got employees' anniversary pins.
Oh, okay, yep. Get one.
All right, we're going to do the employee anniversary pins, and once you call your name and you've accepted your pin or award, please stand up here so we can get a photo afterwards. And all the five-year pin recipients, we're waiting on the pins to come in, but we still need you to come up here for your other gift and the picture. So we'll start with the one-year recipients, beginning with Shanice Harris Cobb with the Detention Center. Diane Grantham, Public Health Administration. Anthony Padilla, Register of Deeds. Eugene Coon, Solid Waste. Jordan Welsh, Public Health. Travis Lucas, Register of Deeds. Ethan Brock, Sheriff's Office. Jason Cooper, EMS. All right, that concludes our one-year recipients. Now for our five-year, beginning with John Taylor from Facility Services. Miranda Diarco with Solid Waste. Christina Creach with the Sheriff's Office. Andrea Alford, Veteran Services. Kalana White with the Library. Kristy Greer, Health Department. Jordan Dale with the Sheriff's Office. And Matthew Baker, Information Technology. And that concludes our five-year pin recipients. For our ten-year recipients, we have Ronald Peel, Detention Center. And that concludes our tenure. The next is our twenty-year pin recipient, and that would be Patrick Hux with the Sheriff's Office. And he is our only twenty-year recipient today. And for 25 years, we have one recipient, Vicki Pfaffner with the Detention Center. And that concludes our employee service pin. And that'll kind of, maybe two lines if possible, or have some short people get in the front. Vertically challenging. There we go. There we go. Ginger, you should be in there as well. All right, and then it's... Everybody look up at the red dot on the camera as soon as I get the all-clear. From Joel. And we got it. Thank you all.
All right, do we have anybody sign up for the public hearing? At 9:15?
Yeah, but we still have the proclamation by...
So we don't open up the public hearing now at 9:15?
It's only 9:15.
That clock's wrong.
All righty. Motion to approve the Martin Luther King Day proclamation is presented by Commissioner Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day Proclamation. Whereas Monday, January 20th, 2025 commemorated and celebrated Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King MLK Jr. Day and honored his life as a civil rights leader, inspiring a legacy of accomplishments as a social and political activist. And whereas Dr. King was dedicated to realizing his vision for a better world by fighting for the rights and dignity of all people, becoming one of the country's most influential voices of public consciousness, and being committed to principles of equality and justice for all. He used moral means to pursue honorable goals of eradicating racism, classism, and poverty while simultaneously creating new forms of civil engagement and philanthropy at local and national levels. And whereas Dr. King received the Nobel Peace Prize in 1964 as the youngest person to ever receive this honor. Inspired by his life of selflessness, the United States Congress and Senate passed the MLK Holiday and Service Act in 1994 by combining the national holiday honoring Dr. King's birthday with a national day of service known as Martin Luther King Jr. Day of Service. And whereas Wayne County community members of all perspectives and ages are encouraged to participate in MLK's National Day of Service, volunteer events on January 20th, 2025, and throughout the year in service, remaining steadfast and cultivating and fostering a culture of inclusivity and acts of kindness through services to others. Now therefore, the Wayne County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim January 2025 was Martin Luther King Jr. Day, a national day of service, and the county of Wayne adopted this day of... 21st day of January 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Appointments Committee? Appointments Committee?
Commissioner Williams is adding form of a motion.
That is in a form of a motion, thank you.
Yes.
We're going to public here tonight, 15:00.
Madam Chair, we've got a number of recommendations for appointment of these matters will be brought up at our next meeting. The Appointments Committee recommends the appointment of Ethel Sampson to the Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee. Next, we are recommending the appointment of Summer Denton to the Tourism Development Authority, replacing Nikki Cox. Next, we want to reappoint the following: Jamie Livingston, Jason Adams, Sheriff Larry Pierce, Matthew Delbridge, Kristy Howell, Kimberly McGuire, Carol Bowden, Philip Sexton, Antonio Williams, Brooklyn Etch... H? Thank you. Yambrella Casquella. I'm sorry, I'm butchering these names. Dustin Pittman, Curtis Stackhouse, Scott Satterfield, Hunter Huma. Felicia Wadner. Felicia Brown, Beverly Bell. Renita Dawson, Mary Ann Dudley, Branny Vickery, and Colleen Kozinski to the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Again, those are coming up at our next meeting. The next, we are recommending the reappointment of Ken Gerard and Dr. Lazeris to the Wayne Health Corporation Board of Directors. Lastly, we are recommending the reappointment of Roger Dinges to the GWTA Governing Board. So those recommendations will come up for a vote at our next meeting. Wow. Thank you, Madam Chair.
How about the Pike... Are we going to do that one too?
Did you skip the Pikeville one?
Okay, I see that now. We are also recommending the replacement of Danny Van Deever with Craig Pearson for the Pikeville Planning Board. Wow, we were busy this morning, were we not? Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, our public hearing, 9:15. To receive public comments regarding an economic development agreement between Wayne County and Wayne County Development Alliance for development of pad-ready site and construction of warehouse on Lot 6 of the Wayne County Business Campus in Goldsboro, North Carolina.
Good morning. I'll go over this real quick. We've discussed it before, but as you're aware, the Wayne County Business Campus, we've completed construction of that, and we're in the process of advertising those lots. WCDA has found a potential buyer for Lot 6, and there's a map included in your materials so you can identify which one Lot 6 is. But they have a grant to go ahead and get that pad ready for construction, and they also want to use some of their investor funds in order to get that up and running. So right now, what the proposal is, they came to the county and they would like us to enter into this agreement. So they have $100,000 in grants. They have a $20,000 match as well as $220,000 in investor funds. With that, they're going to get that pad ready. What they're requesting is that the county go ahead and deed over Lot 6 to them, and then that way, they can go get a zero-interest loan for construction of the building. Similar, it's a rural economic development loan, 0% interest, and it's through Tri-County. So they would like to use the property as collateral, and then when the building is finished, they would sell it to the person that they've advertised it to, and then they would pay off the note immediately. And then when the property is sold, first, Wayne County will be reimbursed $387,750, and that represents our development costs as well as property acquisition for that specific lot. And then the remaining funds would go to reimburse WCDA, whatever is left. And if you recall, the allocation of these funds is governed by a 2017 agreement between the county, the city, and WCDA, and it calls for the county to be reimbursed all of its property acquisition costs before any other party. So we're modifying the 2017 agreement just a little bit for this one individual lot.
And again, how much was the county being reimbursed?
And that's a proportional cost based off acreage, just for Lot 6.
And that's the developments just on Paytown Road, 111?
It is, mhm. Right behind T11.
Any more questions?
And my understanding is that the WCDA board has already approved this as well, so they're ready to move forward.
Can we move forward on it today?
You can.
And did anybody sign up for the...
Can I make a motion that we approve?
I close the public hearing and open up the regular board meeting for the entertainment of a motion for the economic development agreement between Wayne County and Development Alliance of Wayne County. Do I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we approve the Wayne County Development Alliance development of a pad at Lot 6. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. You may vote.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Motion carried. By a six to one. Exunfinished business, discussion of firework permits.
Yeah, I can go over that as well. At last meeting, there was some discussion about the requirements for issuing fireworks permit. So at the request of the board, this was added on for discussion. I've uploaded all the relevant materials to the packet. It includes Article 54 of Chapter 14 of the North Carolina General Statutes, and that governs the issuance of permits. So under state law, anyone who discharges pyrotechnics is required to go to the county to seek permission for a permit. So here in Wayne County, they would go to the inspections Department, submit an application, and then they have to submit a plan. I've also uploaded the fire code as well, so inspections make sure that the North Carolina Fire Code, that the plans for the show is up to date and it complies with the fire code. Once that's done, they would make a recommendation to the board for approval. So I've uploaded all that information. A violation of Article 54 is a misdemeanor. It's a Class II misdemeanor. So anyone who does not follow that procedure is subject to be criminally charged. And I also included a resolution several years ago. You all voted to delegate your approval authority to the city of Goldsboro just because it's really... It was an overkill coming here because it already went to City Council and they approved it. So you delegated authority for that approval to the City Council. All other municipalities in the county, you still approved that as well. So... Happy to answer any questions, but in short, you know, the issue was, I believe last time, there was, you know, concerns that maybe that we're not requiring everyone to do inspections. to do inspections, and Carol has passed out a list of approvals that you have done over the years. So anyone who doesn't come for you to, for approval and still shoots off fireworks, they're subject to criminal prosecution. And that would be up to the law enforcement agency, either the Goldsboro Police Department or the county, depending on where the violation occurred.
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
And just for clarification, this actually governs anyone, individual or organization that shoots fireworks in the county.
That's correct.
And as such, it's up to the individual to get that permit. If they don't get the permit and shoot fireworks, they in essence have exposed themselves to criminal prosecution.
That's correct.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And according to this list that Carol has given us, I don't see any that was not approved.
I have a question. What would, what would be the criteria if it's like, say someone that was, just someone locally that was shooting off fireworks? Like, is there a certain amount of fireworks that would put them in a category where they are violating?
So it's defined by statute, but in short, there are legal fireworks here, obviously ones that you can go purchase, but my understanding is it's a height requirement, so if it goes above a certain height, that's when this would be triggered. So, you know, your, the tents that pop up around July 4th, all those are obviously legal. It's when it goes to a certain height, that's when this gets triggered, and they would have to apply for a permit.
And it wouldn't be like, say for instance, if you had a certain amount, it wouldn't matter?
No.
Okay.
So really, you're talking about from recreational to professional business?
Correct. Correct.
So to follow up on that, evidently, if there are fireworks that are sold on any of these tents and so forth that you could actually purchase, but if fireworks are purchased in North Carolina, it evidently does not reach that height.
That's correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if you buy fireworks and shoot them off, and you purchase them in North Carolina, then there shouldn't be a problem.
Uh-uh. They should, they should be, if you're getting them from one of those tents, all those are illegal in North Carolina. If you were to go to another state like south of the border or something like that, and then you come back up, those, those are the illegal, and you'd be subject to prosecution if you're caught.
If you're caught.
If I may, Madam Chair, just if I were to purchase fireworks from Walmart on the 4th of July, do I need a permit? So this could affect Peter's business.
And if I may add, this all stemmed from Mr. Lewis being at the last meeting, and he sent in two public records requests. One, all email correspondence between he and I, as well as some 911 calls from this past New Year's Eve where individuals not associated with a public display set fire to some things, vehicles, I'm not sure which, for illegal fireworks. So we sent him all of that information, have not heard back from him at all. But again, unless somebody's caught actually utilizing the illegal fireworks, there's nothing that the commissioners could do.
Here's the other thing, how are you going to, I mean, who clarifies illegal? You can't--
By the height.
Yeah, but who's going to measure?
Some of those are rather obvious, but in terms of how far they go up, but--
They're already come and gone by the time, I mean, I just think--
It's no different than if somebody was burning grass and accidentally set fire to a building or car. That's on them and their insurance. So anyway, we've sent him all the information that he's requested, and you have the list of all the permits, but there are certain requirements, as Andrew stated, when someone does a public display, they've got to have a certain amount of liability insurance, they have to prove that they have all the individuals on site to make certain if anything goes wrong. They have to list every bit of the fireworks, their description, their size, all of that. So there's a big difference between that and Joe Blow going out here and shooting off south of the border stuff.
Well, and it's just like the ones that sold in the parking lot at Walmart. I mean, they're illegal in North Carolina. I mean, if not, they couldn't be selling. Like I said, I've been on the board 13 years, and this has been the issue for 13 years, so we'll deal with it.
And another 13 years.
No, ain't going to be another 13.
We hope so.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew.
Thank you.
On the consent agenda, entertaining approval, we've gone over the consent agenda.
I'm moving for approval. I'm moving to approve this consent agenda.
Consent agenda passed 6 to 1. Now we will move along to the county manager's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to let everyone know, Mr. Crumpler is doing well, and is still under the weather a bit, but we wish him a speedy recovery, we look forward to seeing him soon. And the weather is going to be cold, so make sure you're taking precautions at home with family, with your pets, to stay warm the next few days. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We'll move on to the Commissioners Committee report. Mr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had the opportunity to attend the Martin Luther King event at Deeper Life Church, me and Chairwoman Akoc. We attended, it was a beautiful event. Got a chance to just, just be a part of something that everyone, you know, should enjoy. It's nothing like it, so thank you.
Mr. Doctor?
I enjoyed watching the inauguration yesterday. Of fireworks? I wanted to, but it really was good. I, I know a lot of people questioned why that was moved indoors, but when you got up this morning and it took your breath away from you, you recognized that was a little rough to actually have an all-day event there in Washington. But I hope we all pray for our new president and vice president as they lead our country over the next four years. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Akoc?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to follow up on what the proclamation that Mr. Williams read. You know, I was, I was born in 1946, and that was, segregation was still going on. And, you know, at that time, I may not have agreed 100% with what Dr. Martin Luther King was doing, but as I've grown older and got more material, I hope, I can look now and see the shape this country is in, and I'm not talking race, I'm just talking about people in general. He would be so disappointed on some of the things that's going on today. I mean, he, he had his peaceful marches, they weren't always peaceful, but his people wanted one starting the ruckus. But it's just, as much work as he put into bringing this country together and to see some of the things that's going on now, I just think he would be so disappointed. Thank you.
Mr. Foster?
No comment.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple things, since our last commissioner meeting, I've had the opportunity to attend my first Eastern Carolina Council meeting in New Bern, so I enjoyed the opportunity to go there and meet fellow commissioners from across the state and people from different municipalities, and the director, and learned a lot at that meeting on the opioid crisis in North Carolina and some potential funding, as well as funding that ECC provides for our aging population, so enjoy that opportunity. We had a WAGES, excuse me, board meeting as well since the last commissioner meeting, and for those of you that might not be aware, WAGES is an organization that was started in the 1960s for the war on poverty. They've got some really good programs, and if you know anyone right now that is having trouble paying their rent or utility bills, WAGES has a grant they receive from the federal government, so please encourage them to take advantage of that. It's temporary, but if you know someone who's struggling right now, please let them know. Also, I had the privilege with Commissioner Akoc to attend the Rosewood Fire Department banquet this past Friday, so I enjoyed sitting, sitting with him and learning a lot about the volunteer fire service in Wayne County, and how important that was and when it got started, as well as just enjoying the men and women of the Rosewood Fire Department, and thank you to them and all others as well that put their lives on the line every day to protect our citizens and the property of our citizens, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, ma'am. The, Wade didn't mention it, but the Farm Association banquet has been canceled tonight, so I don't, they rescheduled it.
I have not heard whether they reschedule or not.
And, and I'm going to tell you, I say we're going to get four inches of snow in Wayne County. I'll clear that. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
I might have to get a drift to get that measurement anyway.
We'll all be able to house your cookouts. I also had the wonderful opportunity to attend the Martin Luther King with Commissioner Williams. Wonderful, wonderful music presentation, and they had special assigned seats for us where we could be on the front row. And one of the nice things that happened when I got ready to leave, they escorted me out to my car to make sure I got to my car safely and everything, and I really liked that. I mean, I hadn't had that done in a long time, but we were treated very, very special, and the appetizers and the food was great. Also attended the Belfast Fire Department with Commissioner Akoc and Commissioner Gurley, great steaks. I attended the Chamber event, that was recognition of the community efforts of different ones, and that was a great event as well. And that's all I have, so. Anybody else have anything to say before we adjourn?
Madam Chair, I just want to add, in regard to the Martin Luther King event, I want to shout out Pastor Timothy Dortch. He was amazing. You thought that Martin Luther King was in the room?
Yes.
You thought he was in the room, so I just want to shout him out. So much great talent here in Wayne County.
He sounded just like him.
He's just like him.
Okay, we will adjourn. Thank you, guys.